I will call the meeting to order. The meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for Ricky keeping and by Mr. Gant. Does anyone else who would like to report the meetings? I see none. Appreciate people signing the attendance sheet. We will entertain public comment from the town administration relative to the interim town administrator. Yes ma'am.
Kim Sherwood at 21.
I think we're, just for the camera, you're asking me to just go to.
This chair right here.
I already have a chair there either one.
This one right here.
This one.
Oh, that's what you're.
Yeah.
Kim Sherwood at 21. And I understand the comments are today for the interim position. I wanted to take the opportunity to give broader, some broader comments that hopefully will carry through. I understand an interim is here for maybe up to six months. So, since I have been in town, there have been a couple of things that I've really watched closely. And I have to say that it's really interesting that we have a government review committee currently reviewing our town administrator type of government. And I've always considered it as a very precarious type of government. We elect you all, you hire somebody to carry out what you decided you want done, you know, abiding by the laws, et cetera. So, this position is always, is somebody who takes direction from an elected board. And one of the pieces of, one of the cornerstones of that has always been the public's access to public records and the need to keep with open meeting law. And as all of you know here, we have had quite a history of complaints by myself and others with the, with public records as well as more than one or two open meeting law violations. And we also operate strangely with things such as a tin home getting PDFs. So, you know, we're at the point where it's a $30 million, $33 million budget. And there's an awful lot of information that has to be spread out to a lot of different people. We don't have a mayor, you know, that sits here and makes decisions. We have five of you elected. Every three years, somebody possibly moving in or renewing. And a town administrator who, again, it's a precarious position. A mayor is something you can, town manager, different animal, town administrator. And so, I'm here basically to talk on the side of the citizens feeling the frustration that has occurred with trying to understand what's happening in this building and with the budgets and with the process here. And I do hope that when you look at these candidates, that you take into consideration their backgrounds. None of them, two of them have other complaints. You know, they're not perfect either and whether a school committee really falls under their jurisdiction. It's not just Cosfield that needs to understand that the public has the right to know and to get information and to get original documents. It's in other towns, but to see if we could have a shift here as far as you understanding that the public has the right to know, we find what happens here. And to do away with the, you know, to have somebody who understands that role and honors that law, I think, should be worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to say something? According to Luster's back row, we have the sheriff. We should acknowledge the chief attending both the first and second round of meetings.
Well, I'm here for a long haul. Because the comments are relative to the interim candidates, right?
Yes.
And there's two today, right?
Yes. Okay, then I am seeing no more public comment. I'm going to move up. Do we have any minutes?
No.
No. Okay. Is there any correspondence that any men would like to discuss?
Yes, I'd like to talk about the fact that we are getting some response about the signed bylaw letter that has gone out. Two or three people have said, I need somebody to show me whether I'm in compliance or not. The question is, how are we going to do that, Dick? Are you going to go down there? Are we going to send John down there or me or who?
Glenn is the enforcement officer. He's the one who makes the call.
Yeah.
We do certainly want to help somebody look at the help. But I think that we need to lead with John, with Glenn doing it because he's the one who can make the call on it. We can't make that call because sometimes there's a question in his mind as to whether this is too big, too small, whatever else. It's up to him to make the call as the zoning enforcement officer.
Agreed.
I think that's really the way it is.
And so, what I think would be helpful, as we'll talk about more in a meeting or two, we don't have official liaisons. We have sort of sometimes unofficial, it's almost a little more official areas of response. And Dick, you've been kind enough to do the letter and take the lead on this. I feel like we need to have one or two members of the board responsible for the linkage with the enforcement officer and follow up and whatnot.
And potentially with the public, with the businesses, to talk with them and explain what's happening. That Glenn would, but I have to look it out with Glenn and he'll be out and whatever else to answer some questions. But not to answer, but not to answer questions, but to work with the public.
So, I don't mean to put you on the spot. We all do this so.
No, that's good. This is the time to do it.
Are you comfortable doing that? Would you like Mr. Jackson out?
He doesn't need me to do that. You can start the process by talking to John and get his agreement and whatever you go. If you need me, you can call me.
There's got to be.
I think that's a good way to start. If this thing blows up and everybody needs some, no question.
Obviously, you can always make a backhoe for a while.
Yeah, right.
And no disrespect to anyone working it out, but I think it needs the boards' follow through, their follow up.
Yes, yes.
Did you watch this?
Yeah. I suspect most people receiving the letters have found them sufficiently clear that they are able to be fairly confident whether they're in compliance or not. In those instances, such as the one letter that we received here, there may be some other ones I can think of trouble. We might end up with a half dozen or even a dozen where people have genuine questions. I'm wondering if it makes sense that speaking as selectmen but not as the enforcement officer, whether we could offer, if they asked, our interpretation and say, sort of as an advisory, but you're going to have to get the actual inspection by the building inspector. But it might help speed things along if some of these individuals had someone who said, well, this is it, this is how we understand it. And I certainly would be willing to help out with that. I don't think it's going to be one. If three of us ended up doing it, I think it's going to be one or two businesses per person. But I think providing that as a service and as kind of a liaison in the sense that we're trying to solve a problem, not trying to tag people.
I think we have two situations. One, we see in the letter where people genuinely cannot understand the bylaw and don't know if they're in compliance or not. And they're trying to be good businesses and reach out to us to find out if there's an issue. And that's great. They're very cooperative and they're proactive. Then there's the group that probably knows they are not in compliance and they're not going to reach out to anyone to say, can you come by and let me know? You know, so I think there needs to be another piece to this process, spearheaded by Glenn, but we can certainly work with him to go out now that the letter has been distributed, to check and see if any signs that he feels are not in compliance have been taken down or if they're still up. And what do you do if they're still up? What is that process so that we're giving businesses time to react and let them know what the next steps are? Because I think we're all in agreement as to what signs are up that shouldn't be up. I mean, it's pretty clear, but there needs to be steps now to actually move forward or it's going to seem as if the letter has no teeth and the town is not going to do anything about it.
Well, I think once, my understanding is that the enforcement clock ticks when a notice of violation is provided and not until. So, the first thing is a courtesy call saying, you're out of compliance. And I think that could be done in an advisory capacity by us. I would prefer, if the building inspector has time to do it, that he do that himself sort of because he'll be one coming to the violation notice if it is there. And that what we should do is be sure that that is starting and is happening. My fear is that things are going to get put back and we're going to be into January and, you know, I haven't been out to do this or that and some people have already started making changes. I think we need to be clear that there is a time in which we expect those inspections, be they courtesy inspections or enforcement inspections, will be accomplished. And I don't think we have been explicit about that yet. I think right to me. As you said, more explicit.
I don't think we need to have any more conversation, but we've said, Gant's going to take care of it to start the ball.
That's great.
I've never known him to let things fall through the cracks, so I'm not worried about him not getting cranked up and getting started. And as the program develops, we'll see how big it becomes.
Yeah, I think that's the important piece. Apparently, no word is tonight, but we need to review it and you need to ask me. And if you hear things, something's not happening, we need to do it. I do think that's a good way to start. I agree. And if it ain't getting done, you know, ask me and maybe I'll ask for help, whatever the case may be. But I think we need to move and we need to respect Glenn in his role. He is the one that can enforce it with fines and whatever else. He's the one who puts it out. And again, he's the one that would make a judgment. That doesn't mean that if somebody asks us a question, you know, do you allow these kind of feather signs in the, feather banners or whatever else? I mean, you can ask, well, the section right here says, these are the things that are good and it's not. I think really try to stick to the language. It makes it easier for people because they see, you see it. But to make a judgment call along the way, I think we need to be careful because that's up to Glenn to really do. And the worst thing would be is if I say, yeah, that looks fine with me, that's all right. As far as I know, that's all right. And then two days later, a public statement, nah, you know, that's not right. But.
Yeah, I personally would not tell you which signs are in and outside of compliance and I wouldn't want to risk that. But I, from a brief conversation with Glenn, I think his take on it was more the, if they have questions, have them call me.
Yes, sure.
Not, I'm going to go out and check and see if anything is not in compliance.
True, true.
And so, I think that step needs to be done because those signs have been up for years and I think some action, as John said, the clock has to start ticking at some point to let people know, know that's not in compliance and work with them in some fashion. But I think it takes something proactive on the part of Glenn to get that vote.
To give you a last.
At this point, we only have one.
If you and/or Glenn feels that he needs further discussion with the board this whole, just let Debbie know and we'll know if it's appropriate.
Thank you.
In the old business section of the agenda, would it be possible just to get a quick update each time? Because I think summertime's a great time, particularly if anybody does any construction to do or anything like that, a great time to make changes. I'd like to kind of get the sense that it is moving forward and we are paying attention to it.
Absolutely, that's exactly what that section in general is intended for. Debbie?
That would, I would feel very comfortable with that. I feel very comfortable with you working with Glenn to get the process moving.
Just for the record, we have, I'm only aware of one communication from the business about asking for help. Do we have any others at this point?
Yes, there were three.
Yeah.
There are three. And Debbie has them?
There's two phone calls. Yeah, I had a phone call from Gerald Pools and then Beth got a phone call from somebody, but I don't know who that was because she sent it to Glenn. So, there was three of them. There was two phone calls and then the email.
One of the things that we have to do is track these things to make sure they don't fall through. Somebody's looking for help. How we deal with it may be an issue, different ways and different circumstances. We need to do whatever we want.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. More or less on the signed bylaw, I don't know if others look at certain little things around town that I do and think about somewhere between 2:00 and 3:00 a.m. usually. But I'm pleased to announce that if anybody has been aware of the slanted, maybe dangerous, rusted pole between the banks that's been out there for years, it is no longer with us. And anyway, compared to some of the more global projects we have going downtown, but every little bit, so I was happy to see that. I drove back and forth three times to Major, I wasn't saying.
Kelly's the one that got that done.
Excellent, good. All right. Next week, Thursday is July 4th. Welcome Monday.
5th, 1st. Oh, Thursday's 4th, I'm sorry. I'm reading. You're right.
That's that day that some country, you know, was born.
That's my mouth.
Still July, but I thought they changed it to July 5th and it doesn't. Thursday, I believe, is July 4th. Town Hall is not open. Friday, Town Hall is not open. So, in reference to Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, both myself and our clerk will not physically be in town. We do have a one and two pecking order in terms of who will get calls. We are both available if need be, but just, and we're doing the best we can to sign everything that I could conceive we would be signing. But just in case it's not, Mr. Jackson is going to be physically in town?
I'd be tense.
Great. So, I would entertain a motion relative to his ability to sign if something comes up.
Motion to appoint selectman Boyd Jackson temporary signature authorization for the Board of Selectmen starting Monday, July 1st, 2019 through Sunday, July 7th, 2019.
Oh, we're going to give him the whole week?
The whole week, just the.
Holiday is it all?
So, Sunday signature.
My 54th wedding anniversary.
Oh, congratulations.
I might go to dinner.
So, Gray Hill gets repaved?
Never know. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, Debbie, so you're also on that. Does anybody have anything besides, besides our prior discussions on interim town administrator? One of those public meeting things where the efficiency side says we could pick up eight minutes by starting now and the other side says that we've let the public know we'll start at 3:30. Any opinions on problems with going forward?
I think everyone who's going to be here is here.
And the meeting itself has been posted to us earlier.
And we did not specifically put a time for the.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Sage Council. Good afternoon, Mr. Delaney. Welcome back. Thank you for coming again.
Thank you.
We're going to ask you kindly to get in the hot seat one more time.
Good.
How are you today, Steve?
The sun's out, it's warm.
Not a bad day.
Healthy place.
So, I'm going to thank you again for coming in and reading your schedule. We appreciate it. I believe the questions that we're going to focus on, at least initially, were distributed. Did you receive them?
Yes, yeah.
So, it has to do with, with the awareness that we're talking about interim position, it still has to do with the fact that in addition to smooth continuation of town functions, there are a number of projects at various stages of implementation. We appreciate your experience and guides about the successful candidate and helping to keep these projects moving forward. We also, again, want to be realistic, not only as they're the smooth continuance, but also things happen. You know, a number of issues popped up in the last 24 hours. That's not necessarily a tip of, so we want to be realistic on our expectations of an interim, but we would like to address some questions. Do you want to take the?
Sure. So, although you already have these questions, Steve, I'm just going to read it aloud so that our audience, maybe who might be watching the video afterward, understands where we're coming from. So, the first project that we were asking our candidates to speak to was the implementation of the document management system. So, the current status is that a contract was signed with General Code in April to lease its Laserfish software to scan and store town hall documents. Laserfish training was held for four departments in May, town clerk, the planning department, the Board of Selectmen's office and the land use departments. A plan to prioritize and schedule the scanning of the documents by department with limited resources has not yet been developed. So, if you could please speak to how you might work with these departments to develop a plan to move forward.
Sure. Each of these questions were kind of interesting because I remember at the conversation at our last meeting, it was kind of like, what are your priorities? So, when I come in on the first week or so, I've got a sense of where to go. This sort of asks for an operational plan before I begin. So, in some ways, I can't do that, but I can give you a sense of my thinking of how I would approach it. And then you can kind of see the plan evolves from there and I've got a copy for you that you can have afterwards. So, there was a couple of, there was a flag there that came up in your question and you talked about limited resources for the smaller departments. So, my first sense is what kind of resources were available for training on this piece to begin with. So, just in terms of how I approach things and I've always done is ask questions and the answers generate kind of my action plan. So, my first question, and I was looking through some of the documents and I didn't really get a sense of how this all gets started. Was there a cost benefit analysis on going ahead with this project? What's the yearly subscription cost? And I couldn't see that, so I didn't have access to the contract. I see in, on the website for code, that there's a license fee for the number of licenses you have. So, I want to take a look at what's the financial impact for one piece for now, but also going forward to, there's a software cost anyway on financial packages or whatever. Why is it a good idea? Do we have a sense of why is it a good idea? What is the goal? Does the staff and committee personnel understand and support the project that are going to use? It's kind of a key piece. Have they been involved in the process of implementation here or getting to the point of implementation? And do they buy into it? That's a pretty important one because if we get to a point where I find people can be less enthusiastic about new change, it takes another approach on how to help them understand that it's to their benefit. So, that's kind of where I would come from there. Has there been IT coordination? You have an IT contract, I believe. Has there been discussions with them of how to incorporate this effort into your overall IT plan? It's the old story, we bought a computer but we weren't sure what we wanted to put in. Maybe that's already been done, but I wondered that over the years, the process, what is it that you want to do first before you buy the equipment? So, that's a piece of it. Are there any onsite or remote support included as part of the package? In other words, as part of the lease agreement with Laserfish, what kind of support are they giving you? The other piece of it that I was thinking about, are there any user groups? Any other communities using this? One of the things we found very successful with some of the financial packages we've used in the past is that there were user groups, let's say on the North Shore for a particular financial package. And a support staff might together, get together once a month for lunching or something like that and just talk about things that they're running into with their software and things that they're trying to do. Administrative managerial staff do this stuff all the time. Support staff don't do it enough. So, those are the kinds of first questions I would ask as I walk into this to kind of get a baseline. And then from that, I could tailor a support plan or an implementation plan that's realistic in terms of timeline, once I get a sense of what the baseline is. It's kind of a long response, but I was, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this and trying to give you an insight of how I would approach it.
Okay.
We have a number of answers for you if you're selected.
I don't expect them all now.
But it was a lot of the thought process and the actual evaluation that we did prior to getting to this point.
Correct.
Excellent. It seems like that's right in sync with what the process that we went through to get here.
Yeah.
And just continuing how to develop the plan and the schedule with the departments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a second selectman who wants to read the next?
We'll read this.
We haven't assigned cards exactly, but.
Yeah, I'll read it.
I'm a little disappointed you went around and worked.
Yeah. Keeping you off the card here.
One of the Board of Selectmen's 2019 goals was to ensure adherence by businesses to the town's signed bylaws since over the past year, the town has seen a number of signs appear that are not in compliance. A letter was sent to businesses last week requesting they review the bylaw and ensure compliance. An article on this will be appearing in the local papers this, next week. Following receipt of the letter, some businesses had called the town hall asking for support determining if their signs are in compliance. Please speak to your recommendations for the next step, helping the town and the businesses ensure signed bylaw compliance.
A similar approach to this one in terms of thinking it through, how would I approach this? I took a look at the bylaw, the signed bylaw. I couldn't find when it was enacted or adopted. I've seen a couple amendments to it, but I couldn't find the origin of it. I don't know.
86.
86, it goes back that period.
Been amended a little since.
And I found a couple of recent modifications or amendments. Is there something in particular that has brought this to the fore? Is there a particular type of sign that's created this kind of response? There usually is. So, okay, let's see if there's anything in particular about that issue that can be easily addressed or not. Are there consistent areas of concern such as are the regulations okay or do they need modifications? As I do a first read through the bylaw, it's confusing just by the nature of legal stuff. So, how can we make it easier? And one thought perhaps is we could do a mock-up of some sample signs. This is what it looks like in compliance, here's one that's not in compliance. And you can do that on the web or you could do something somewhere in town hall that doesn't, put us in non-compliance with this sign. But something helpful, you could also do an open information session. You could guide, someone who could guide the process through, helping people understand what the signs are, record it, put it up on the web. They could do a little cheat sheet for businesses that say, this is what works and what doesn't. I was interested trying to figure out what's the role of the ZBA in the process. And the other piece that's critical is who's the enforcement authority? I didn't see that in the bylaw. It's normally the building inspector, but.
It is.
Where does it, where does it say that? I couldn't find that quickly. The reason why I ask that is normally the person that enforces also guides the people in terms of what is or is not appropriate. Because if I give advice and it's different from the enforcing agent, that creates a conflict and it's not good governance in terms of how things work or should flow. Almost anything that we've tried to do, I see three steps in terms of trying to make stuff like this work. Education, helping people understand what is we're trying to do. And we've done it safe with recycling, which is now the shift in recycling as a whole new game out there in terms of not happening. But education, it could be on almost, almost anything, but on the signs. So, we do an educational piece rather than a harsh kind of enforcement write-off. Let people know what we expect through a warning period. Say, listen, you're not in compliance. We're not trying to, we're not trying to create fines here. We're trying to create compliance because of the reasons of aesthetics and value of the community. And then the third piece is enforcement. So, I see there's a three-step process. Education guidance, I mentioned that, and open sessions to have some discussion about it. Other concerns. When you, your signed bylaw is pretty restricted from, as I've looked at it, and it's evidenced by, I live on 114 in Middleton, you can see the difference there. Lack its control on signs, although they're trying, but the horse is out of the barn, if you will, on some of the areas. So, you look around here and say, we want to protect this. Like the conversation we had last night, what is it you want to protect about the community? Signs are a critical piece to that. So, that's how I'd approach that one.
Thank you. Did you want to flip a coin?
Again, for those listening, there were three questions. This is a third of them. And the applicant Steve had these questions and also Robert had the same questions. So, I will read them. The subject is goals and objectives. The Board of Selectmen will develop their 2019, 2020 goals and objectives in July. The Board of Selectmen would like the departmental employee objectives to align with and support Board of Selectmen goals. A rigorous assignment, alignment and status update process has not been followed. Please share your recommendations to help ensure that our goals are aligned. Similar approach, I was intrigued by the phrase, a rigorous alignment and status update process has not been followed. There's a lot in that sentence, I think. But I would, I would want to go back and take a look at over the last, say, five years. What have your goals been? And what's the, is there, are there any trends? Is there something that I can see here that's going to help me better understand how your board thinks as it evolves with new members, different points of view? Are there? Are there any constant themes that we can see going through there? What is the perceived alignment disconnect, if you will? And where does that come from? What's the thinking of the department heads as it relates to your goals? Do the department heads get any feedback to the town administrator or to the Board of Selectmen on how they feel about your goals? I would suggest a separate, are they aware of your goals? First, there was another piece. Are the department heads aware of the goals? I can give you an example in Davis. Town manager would go through a goal-setting process with the board. The MBO objectives with the department heads reflects those high, highest priority goals of the Board of Selectmen. So it flows clearly down in that fashion. And I would see something at some point tying in. So an MBO type or whatever type of management plan you would look at, where there's a connection between what the departments are doing back to what you as a board set out as a standard of goals for the organization. Not sure how you come up with your goals, but I would almost say something different than a work session, that you should spend a morning somewhere and just spend some time at a posted meeting, which it always has to be. But just talking it through. What is it that can come out of this? It could be a type of what they call a SWOT session of fuels, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, that might be helpful as part of a goal-setting process. I would love to see you do something like that to get it going. And then, as I said, I would work with the department heads. It's sort of a two-way communication piece to get the information back to you as to how things are flowing and consistent with your goals as the boards of directors, if you will, of the town.
Steve, working with the department heads, do you do that in group sessions, similar to a morning session for the board?
Absolutely. Yeah, there should be periodic, regular staff meetings. There should be feedback from them. And then individual one-on-one regular meetings with an evaluation process that goes along with that. And those goals, those performance goals are part of that process, tied in with your timeline.
Yeah, no, what I heard you say, I didn't think I was going to hear it then. You said it, that there is a balance between group meetings where everybody can hear what everybody's thinking and you're kind of spreading a message that everyone hears. I interpret the wrong way, but you hear the same message. But also the need for individual one-on-one meetings to work on either particular issues or also particular reactions and so on. Am I correct in that?
Absolutely. Yeah, and a performance review historically, like an MBO thing, that's not once a year. It's, I would normally meet with department heads at least once a month, if not more. Some you see every day. But there should be a regularly scheduled meeting. Otherwise, you can't, you can't come back eight months from now and say, how are you doing on your objectives? That's unfair to both parties. So you've got to kind of take a look at it. And in fairness to them, we used to call it barriers to success. What will sink you from getting to your goal? It might be regulatory, it might be budgetary, it might be something else. But you'd need to identify that as part of the discussion about what you want to achieve and how you're going to do it.
Steve, you had mentioned before about how you communicate with the board. We're talking about written status updates every two weeks or whatever. How do you like to stay in communication and get updates from your department heads?
I tend to be pretty visible. One of my goals is to be able to walk into a department and not have anybody care because it's so commonplace when you go, Steve's here. Because then I can really figure out what's going on. So I try to stay visible both with the department heads, with the board and with the community. It's important to walk downtown and let the people know who you are. It's a part of the process. And department heads need support. One of my jobs is to help them do their job so that I can help you do your job. And I'll mean this in a negative way, but I'm kind of a buffer to let them perform as professionals and to keep you well informed as to how they're doing and what they're doing. I also mentioned that in terms of communication. If there's something that's going on in the community that you need to know about, I encourage the department heads to let me know right away. And if there's a question, call me anyway. I'd rather have you call me than wonder and then have something blow up later on. It's easy enough to make the call.
I want to change this subject a little bit. You guys can go back to it if you care to. You mentioned a little while ago about work sessions versus regular meetings. I have my own particular idea about what a work session ought to be and what ought to be accomplished in a work session. Give me your ideas about what you've seen in other towns.
Well, you have work sessions on your agenda. I think my reference was do something other than a regular meeting where you can be a little more relaxed. You're not necessarily looking at the agenda. You might have a couple of talking points. A classic example is the Board of Selectmen in one of them used to like to go out to dinner at the Commodore. And they'd post it as a regular meeting. It was a very unusual approach, but their thought was, listen, let's go out and have some food. We'd post it. Reporter would usually come out and join us. But it was the kind of thing, we could talk about commercial versus residential development. What's the long-term plans for water resources? Things like that. It was a very, it was that kind of board where they just tried to do something different. It was, and it worked. It was very unusual, but people would welcome to join if they wanted to. But that kind of process, just something different than a regular meeting. Certainly posted, broadcast, whatever. But something a little more relaxed where you can really just kind of think something through without feeling like you're on a time gun or you've got other things on the agenda to get done.
Any further follow-ups or...
I have a copy of some of my thoughts that you can have if you'd like. I only made one copy, I'm sorry.
This goes right around to death.
That's great. We got it. We know how to make copies. I should have made them, but... It's great.
Do you have any thoughts that you want to leave us with?
I think I've given the all the thoughts I can muster.
I just want to assure you that the reason that we're having the second round is an affirmation of the strength of the candidates that we're talking about.
Well, I'll tell you, the other two candidates that I saw posted were both terrific. So I don't think you'd go wrong with any of us, frankly. But I'm tougher myself. But I mean, you've got some good people before you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Our time table, but I'm assuming the second discussion stays the same or we'll move right forward and let you know.
Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Thank you, Steve. Best wishes for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Steve will be your touchback book for the next...
My phone works. There you go.
Thanks.
Okay, see ya. See ya.